Deputy Mayor, uh, no, not Deputy Mayor, CAO.
Thank you, Worship. There's, there's one thing I want to address related to this six feet. The rezoning is not required for him to proceed with what he wants to do. The, to do a duplex on those lots that he owns, he requires in his two side yards, a one side yard, a ten-foot setback from the property line on the other side, a six-foot setback. So either way, even if he, even if that side was the minimum setback, he's not going to be putting a foundation within that six-foot open space zone section of his property. So it is not affecting, you're not standing in his way from doing exactly what it is he wants to do by agreeing to or not agreeing. All you're doing is aligning the zone with the property line as it now exists. It has no bearing on what can happen on that property. Except, he could not put a foundation of any kind within that six-foot buffer, but our bylaw already provides for that.
Good. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? If you lose a nay, I will see.
Counselor Bennett.
Thank you very much. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
I move to enter into a development agreement to, in order to establish a personal service shop, convenience store, and restaurant up to a maximum combined area of three thousand square feet in, in gross commercial floor area, as well as residential dwelling units at fifty-four Haley Road as outlined in the proposed development agreement of the planners' report.
I so move.
Move by your counsel, McKiess?
I move it.
Uh, I move.
Second.
Counselor Doss?
Counselor Doss? Thank you, Worship. I'm all for development, but still, that part of, that part of town, I still have my, my druthers, I still have my concerns. Uh, if, once, once the drainage, the water problems are, if not, I'm not asking for them to be rectified, but if they were at least under control, then by all means, the very, I'll be the first to, to vote for this, to put the motion forward. But right now, I am still very concerned. And, oh, he's left. Um...
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller, as he, as he said earlier, uh, he doesn't have a purchaser right now.
No, but he says he was, he wanted to fill it, he wanted to do it himself.
Yes, I know, but I'm still, I'm all for development. I will support it. It's just, I would, I would feel a lot, a lot better if, if that, that drainage, if, if the water problem were at least under control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Otherwise, yes, I would support it.
I thought you said you weren't supporting it.
No, I, that's it. I am not supporting this. I do support, do support development.
Okay.
But if, if, if we had something in blueprint, if we had something in writing that says, yes, we are already, we already have that water problem, the drainage problem, under control, and we expect to have that, have that, uh...
Your Worship, that would take, that would take place in our development agreement.
Okay.
Yes? In the development agreement? Just one second. I got you, Dana.
Yeah, I think if the counselor's talking about the bigger, the bigger...
Yes.
Uh, flooding issues that, that are in that area of town, that, that won't be addressed in the, in the development agreement. That's part of the study that Mr. Ernst is doing and, and the subsequent infrastructure changes that might occur as a result of that. Um, you know, it is a side of a hill there, too. So there's, there's always going to be, you know, when you develop, you cause water to move in different, different directions, and it will impact on, on properties down, downstream. In this particular case, property specific, there are provisions within this development agreement that create both a buffer zone, as well as the necessity for a, for a surface water plan to be approved by the engineer. So though this, this particular development agreement wouldn't solve the bigger issue, it will require it to be addressed on this property. Now, if, if the development agreement was not approved, the property owner would be well within his rights to, to subdivide the property into R1 lots and to develop them with no requirement to deal with, with surface water runoff or buffers, because that's not generally required with development for our R1 lots in our land use file.
Nope, not yet, but you, you're on right after Counselor McKiess.
Thank you, your, thank you, your Worship. You know, we've been sitting around this table and we've been saying that we want to bring in industry, we want to bring in business. This, this entrepreneur over here, John Miller, he, he's bought and sold properties, he developed properties, built properties, land developer, I mean, he's, he's an asset to the town of Yarmouth, and he has been for a number of years. He owns businesses, he owns real estate company and that. He wants to have this pass so he can enable any young entrepreneur, or whoever, to be able to put up a business there. And that's, that's what this is all about. I, I read in the report, and I believe what our engineering, engineer Dave Ernst has said, it's adequate. It has, it'll, it'll meet the service that is needed out of that particular area. I'm, I'm comfortable with making a yes decision for me this evening, because it meets, meets all the criteria, and it, it meets everything. And we have, also, we have, you know, protections in there, that for, for our surface water and all the other stuff. I mean, he's going to develop that land, and whoever, whoever buys and develops it is going to be adding a more, more flavorable twist to that land site out there than there is there now. A bunch of alters and a swampy land, as so they say. They're, they're going to build there, they're going to build something nice. It's an asset for the, for the community around there. Uh, if, if they choose to build a, a restaurant or whatever, but it, it's open for anything, if it goes commercial, the way he wants it to go. So I have no problem supporting it, supporting it, and I'll take the recommendation of the engineer and that says it's, it's okay, and, and it, it can be done with no problem. So that's just my thought on it, your worship.
Yep, thank you. Counselor, oh, Counselor Doss, you're late, Todd, now?
Uh, well, yes, all right. I will. I, I, I turned it off just to, just to save some time. Um, I just wanted to very quickly add that Mr. Ernst, and I'm saying this more, more for, for the benefit of, of the public who are not here with us this evening. Mr. Ernst has been working on a solution to, to, to the problem that, that I'm mostly concerned with. He's been working on that for a while, and he's getting closer, is he not, Mr. CAO? Kudos to him. He has been working, he has been working towards, towards finding a solution to that.
Thank you. Good. Okay, so the motion's on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Nay.
One nay. Linda, you good? Okay.
Number three, I move to amend the MPS and the LUB to enable the creation of a health and wellness designation and subsequent health campus zone for the Yarmouth Regional Hospital Center to be applied to the following properties outlined below. Fifty-eight slash sixty Vancouver Street, sixty-two Vancouver Street, sixty-four Vancouver Street, and the Grove Road, where there's no civic number assigned.
Second.
Moved and seconded by, by Counselor Doss. Further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Good. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, do you want to go back up to business? Okay, we're going to go back up to business. Yep, go ahead.
Uh, your worship, I was going to suggest, rather than going back to business, maybe we could do the committee of the whole, because where there are dated items, there may be some dated motions in there. Uh, precedent lay those. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the other people feel.
No, that's a good idea.
I'd like to, I think we should get those out of the way.
I just have to find them, certainly. Um, okay, Deputy Mayor, we're going to do the committee of the whole. I just have to find. Couple pages of them.
I know a lot of this is dated, a lot of this is already, is already under the ideas, but the downtown wayfinding banner? I'm sorry.
What, what, what's going on?
Oh, blow.
Somebody?
Downtown wayfinding and banner? Did we do, we haven't done that yet? No.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting, Counselor Doss, is that we, we, her worship recommended, she suggested that maybe we go back to business, but I've suggested to her worship that maybe we should get the committee of the whole matters done first, because some of those were budget-related, and we passed a budget.
Yes.
You see what I mean? So we should really do those items first, and then if we have time, we'll do the business of the day that's in the, that's in the above, motion above. That was my suggestion.
My error, I apologize. I under, I understood dated, some items on here are dated, and yes, they are, that we don't even, these have already, fine.
Okay, so we're all good? Deputy Mayor, you're on.
I move that the contract for Town Hall Cleaning Services be awarded to the lowest tenderer, Smith Brothers Clean and Shine, in the amount of two thousand eighty dollars per month, plus HST.
So moved? Moved, seconded?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the wayfinding signage be accepted with changes by council.
So moved. Can I have a second, or?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Okay. We're all awake. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's what I thought. Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy Mayor, you're on.
I move that the Public Technology Advisory Committee be reinstated in the committees of council policy.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Question.
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Uh, I move... Go ahead. I move that the matter of Candy Cane Lane be referred to staff for budget considerations, adding twelve more lights.
So moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to investigate using the V plow from Main to Argyle Streets, both sides, early in the morning to accommodate the business community and residents in the downtown.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Accepted. If we need the V plow in the next six months, I'm out of here, too.
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried.
I move that staff be directed to contract out the two thousand and municipal, municipal, electoral bond review process for the next municipal election.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that counselors Mooney, Langill, and Frank Grant, Director of Recreation, from the town of Yarmouth team, in the adoptable April Fools trivia challenge.
Moved and seconded. Only if they win. That's what I thought. See? Any more discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. It's gotten late now, you're winners.
Everybody won, everybody won that day.
Yep.
I move that the town of Yarmouth advance one hundred thousand dollars on next year's funding to the Yarmouth International Airport Corporation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? You guys are messed up.
I move that Superintendent Troy Foot of the Central Nova Scotia Correctional Facility be invited to make a presentation at our council meeting on April seventeenth, two thousand fourteen.
Moved and seconded.
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor, please, aye. Any contrary? Motion carried. Man.
I move that correspondence be sent to MLA's Act Churchill, the Minister of Community Services and Minister of Housing, regarding their long-range plans for offices on Stars Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that Nova Scotia Information Fairy Partnership hold a reception when the Nova Star comes in.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Interruption.
Contrary?
Uh, I move that correspondence from the Youth Engagement Coordinator regarding assistance for an individual to participate in a leadership and volunteer program in Ecuador be received and placed on file.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that correspondence from Irene Ruda regarding the Lost Sea Monument be referred to the Waterfront Development Corporation.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that correspondence be sent to CFAS advising the event will be covered under the Celebrations Society Insurance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that permission be granted to CFAS to block access to Colin Street parking lot from seven AM to twelve thirty PM, July the nineteenth, two thousand and fourteenth, for the Junk in the Trunk Sale.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that correspondence from PJ Motorsport regarding vacant stores on Main Street be received and placed on file.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the Animal Protection Act be referred to the next committee of whole, and that correspondence be sent to the Department of Agriculture regarding additional time to examine the new draft regulations for the Animal Protection Act in more detail to provide a proper response.
So moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the matter of duck tolling retriever statute be referred to the Communities in Bloom Committee.
I think it's a duck, we haven't missed, it's a duck tolling, but whatever. It's T-O-L-L.
T-O tolling, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. There's a couple of, uh...
Sorry. Okay, that one just makes me laugh. Go ahead, Deputy.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Question's been called. All those in favor of the trolls?
Aye.
Nice, nice to have a smile.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the contract with SPCA be accepted as recommended by staff for a two-year term.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to contact the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure Renewal, requesting they ensure the ferry signs are ready.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor Langill.
Yeah, how are we standing with that, CAO? Has anything, I see the one broken up by the one, broken down one by the airport, which I think was ours, has been fixed, but are the ones on the main drag, has there been any discussion with them at all on that? Oh, so you haven't done it yet, okay.
You're going to have to pick up the pace, CAO. We're way ahead of you. All right. That's fair. So, so the motion's on the floor. Any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the mayor and CAO be directed to continue with the agreement with Southwest Eco-Energy Limited as recommended by staff regarding the processing of residential source, separated organic waste, and that the process be commenced with respect to the existing complex.
Thank you. Uh, CAO is going to speak to this, because I'm sitting here thinking, I'm doing what?
Your worship, I think I've corresponded with you on this. We've had a little new information arise uh, with regard to our operational possibilities.
Oh, yes.
Uh, and we have confirmed that our, that our Yarmouth County partners are going to continue to participate with us, and so I would recommend that you defeat this motion. No, just vote against it.
Yep. So moved and seconded?
Uh, just to make sure, you want us to defeat the motion?
Yes, we're going to say. All those in favor? Counselor Doss? Opposed?
Yay.
Motion defeated.
I move that none of the existing compost stock be sold, and staff be directed to come up with an appropriate price for the disposal of existing compo, compost stock at our facility.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Langill?
Your worship, and if this should pass, that should be passed on to the solid waste park manager, as well as the compost facility, because I understand that sales are going on out there. So, and we should be looking at that very carefully. We have a, we have a stockpile there now, which is substantial, but with our bagger unit we have, we may be able to do better things with it. Um, the intent of the motion is we, we have some relatively large customers that buy some relatively large truckloads um, every year, and it would be ideal if we could, from out of the area, and it was, the intent of this motion was to keep the compost in our area, if at all possible, rather than individuals coming in, purchasing it, and, and selling it at a relatively good profit for the price we're charging, because the price we're charging right now is absolutely ridiculous. Uh, it's like, it's really low, and the CAO and I've chatted about it. Uh, so the thought would be is, maybe we should look at the pricing schedule, what we're doing, uh, how we're doing it, and, and come up with a, a proper, because right now, it's, I think you can get a load, a yard, I think, is, correct me if I'm wrong, CAO, but I think a yard is fifty-seven dollars a yard, or is it, no, twenty-six dollars a yard. Twenty-six dollars a yard. A yard is basically a half-ton truck. That's a pretty good deal, when you consider how much you're paying for a bag of compost from a, a garden company, if you know what I mean. And our compost is second to none. It's, was, had been tested, and it's really beautiful stuff. So we should be getting a higher profit margin for it than what we're selling it for. It's, it's really low, it's, it's very inexpensive. So that's the intent of the motion, just put a halt on the sales until we can actually sit down and cost it, because it's been the same price for years. And CAO can speak, of course.
Go ahead, CAO.
Because of the time of year, um, I, I understand we don't want to, we don't want to hold, sell our, sell our compost below, below value, undervalue it, um, but I do think we should continue to sell it in quantities up to two yards. Uh, so I think we should refer the matter of pricing to committee of the whole next week. Uh, let's establish the price we want for it, and, and quickly approve that, uh, and, so then we can turn around the kind of numbers on that that we want to get. Rather than saying to the public that we don't have anything available, let's, uh, let's have staff come back with, with pricing recommendation for next week.
So are we looking at defeating this motion, and then you want to go through with this?
I, what I think, if I'm correct, we should pass this motion, and then I'm going to make a second motion, that we make a recommendation of the committee of the whole, for the committee of whole to give us a price structure for next meeting. So we'll, it'll give us time, because the CAO is quite right. I mean, we should, for one or two yards is not a problem. We're talking ten truckloads going out of the place. That's, that was the whole intent. So by halting those sales, it, it gives the, the people at the waste park the intent that, hey, okay, we're just going to hold things for a bit, and we'll, you know, until we get this thing resolved.
Certainly. Okay, so the motion's on the floor. Further, did you wish to speak?
So you want us to pass the motion, Jeff?
Yeah, we'll go ahead, and then he'll make another motion to price it. Yeah, so we're good with it.
I just want to understand, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
And if I, if I may, my second motion is that staff be directed to come up with a pricing, uh, fee schedule uh, to be brought up at the next committee of the whole meeting. It's already in there, yeah. It, so it's already in?
Oh, yes, okay. Good. Perfect. Okay, so we're good, that one. Deputy Mayor, we are on committee of the whole, April second, two thousand fourteen.
I rec, um, I move that as recommended by the CAO, the transit proposal from Transit Consulting Network be accepted to do a study on our local transit system, and a steering committee be established to work with the consultant.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that counselors Langill, McKiess, and Mooney be members of the steering committee with a citizen representative to be appointed.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded?
Question.
Any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to contact the Utility and Review Board with regard to the status of the Transit Service License for the town of Yarmouth in the future, and make a recommendation to council for a go-forward plan effective May first, two thousand and fourteen.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded? Did you, you, this, we're on the, the URB. We didn't get anywhere with that, anyway. Yeah, okay, good. Okay, any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to enter into discussions with Gary Hudson's, Gary Hudson of Hut's Transit with regard to continuation of service after May first, and a recommendation be made to our council.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded? Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, good. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Do we have any more under here? Committee whole, committee of the whole, planning advisory. Okay, um, let's get back under here. We can do this in thirty minutes, huh? All right. Under business, Town Caucus Agenda Items. And Counselor Langill? Yeah, we, I was just going to say, we got one from you there.
Well, it minds the resolution for the AGM, but I do have an item I think I'd like to see us bring up. Um, and that would be, and maybe the CAO could contact, or I could contact UNSM, but I, wondering about the policy for terms on UNSM committees. Uh, some of those UNSM committees have had the same dragons on them for like two hundred years. Um, and normally in organizations, you like that, Jim? But seriously, we, we, I think we should be, like, a lot of organizations have like a two-term limit, and then you step aside, and especially with municipal governments, give everybody a kick at the can. So I'd like to have us, a discussion at Town Caucus on terms, uh, terms on UNSM committees and boards. Lengths of terms, yes.
Okay, so how do we handle that? But, but as a, I'm just wondering from, from, uh, I just need to know exactly who has to do it, so I want to go by.
Any, any, any of us can ask for an item to be going on the Town Caucus.
Go ahead, CAO.
Sorry, if you pass a motion tonight requesting specific things, then we will, we will send that into, I guess, Louis is a...
Okay. Okay, so do we?
I make your motion.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so the motion on the floor, okay? It's seconded by Counselor Doss. Any further discussion? Question, yes, CAO? Go ahead.
Are, are we going to entertain other possible items that we would recommend for the agenda? Because I, I do have a couple that, that I think you folks should, you folks should talk about with your colleagues. And the first one is the, the Ivony Report, the one Nova Scotia report. I expect it will be on the agenda, anyway, but let's ask for it, just in case. Uh, the municipal indicators that will be released next month. Uh, I think you need to talk about that within the Towns Caucus. And I think you should ensure there's a discussion on dissolution, as we've had four towns in the last couple of years, three very recently, going full speed with that process. So we should find out, or at least have a discussion within that room about what is going on. What are the, what are the indicators? What are the things that are causing them to make those decisions? Because all we're seeing is what's in the paper. It'd be nice to hear it from the counselors.
Good. Deputy Mayor?
Your worship, is, is Jeff asking us to make motions to?
Yeah, we're making, we're going to put it all in the same motion, so the one that Ken put forth, the three that, that, that the CAO mentioned? Yep. Yep, is that okay? Good. Okay, and I would say even, I mean, we've got some time. I can't remember what the date was, May fifteenth, or something like that. So if there's something else in the meantime, we'll, we'll just all get together and...
Yeah, well, any counselor can add an item to the agenda. Any member, any town counselor can. So... can. So, it, but it's nicer if it comes from a council because then it shows that it's something that's concerned, that a number of us are concerned, that all council is concerned about it.
Good. Okay, Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. If someone comes up with one, two, or five other items, do we, we are all going to have to agree. Do we not? No, we can just send them in by email? All right. Thank you.
Good. All right, so the motion's on the floor with the Ivony report, the indicators, dissolution, and the length of terms. Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor, aye. Contrary, motion carried. Street vendors' bylaw, CAO. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I'll just switch back to it here. Okay, so at a meeting about a month and a half, two months ago, I was requested by several members of council to take a look at how we could permit vendors to occupy spaces in the street and keep their stand, their vending stand in place overnight throughout an entire season.
I'm gone. Call me when I'm back, when you're back. I might be in conflict.
So, I, I referred the matter to Mr. Barrow, our solicitor, to look at our, a couple of our bylaws to make a recommendation. And he did share a memo with me, which I've circulated to council, suggest some very specific changes we could make to the street vendors' bylaw to enable that to occur. So, I've put a request for decision in front of you. I've also included above and beyond the solicitor's recommendations, there was some discussion that there are no street vending spaces on the west side of Water Street. So, I'm proposing in here that you also consider making the west side of Water Street, from Brown Street to Lovett Street, a designated spot where street vendors could, could apply and receive a license. I do have some concerns about the proposal and I've outlined those in my CAO's comments. And so, that is for your consideration. So, for tonight, if you wish to proceed with the proposed amendments, then you would, you would approve first reading, which would then trigger a public hearing and consideration of second reading at the next council meeting.
Counselor Dennis.
One of the concerns was wastewater, but I believe that they could add a holding tank like you put on a trailer and they could empty it at the end of the day or whenever it gets full. Were trailers empty? There's at the Irving.
Yeah, the issue that I was anticipating in this proposal is that we're not talking about stands that would be removed on a daily basis. That presently is permitted in, in the bylaw. What we're talking about is stands that would remain in, in, in place throughout the entire season. And so, I, if, the tanks are removable. Okay. Well, if the tanks are removable, then that, that would be a great solution. Yeah. And not every street vendor will be dealing with, with food items either, right? There are vendors that will deal with craft items and where no water or wastewater requirements are. So, that was a consideration and thank you for that. I wasn't aware of the removable waste tanks.
I have to thank my husband for that one.
Thank, thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that we proceed to public hearing with the recommendation as presented by the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Landau, seconded by Counselor Mooney. Any more discussion? Question being called. All, all those in favor, please say aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried.
No, I'll, I'll, no, but you know what I want to say? What, what happened is my, somebody in my family came in and asked Mr. Allen a couple of questions about vendors on Main Street and said to me, wow, that would be a good idea. And then I saw it on the agenda and I said, you know what? If, if she ever did anything, it would just, you know, it had nothing to do with the item tonight. But I said, you know, it's just not worth it. It's just not worth it. Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we are at rent agreement. Yes. CAO.
Thank you, worship. So, from the last number of months, we've, we've worked with the municipalities in Yarmouth and Digby County to craft a, a final, what we hope is a final agreement to establish our regional enterprise network. We did enter in our memorandum of cooperation based on an earlier draft of this. There's nothing substantial that's changed in this agreement in its final form. There was a little bit of wordsmithing around the, the contribution, the in-kind contribution that the District of Clare is making in the first two years. And other than that, of course, you're aware that the board has been appointed and the board is, is underway in terms of finding its first CEO. So, what would be appropriate tonight would be a motion to approve the, approve the sign of the agreement as presented.
So, moved and seconded. Counselor Mackayzak?
Thank you, your worship. Has our solicitor looked at the document? And are you, as CEO, comfortable that the town of Yarmouth should enter into this agreement without any second thought or what have you? You're comfortable? And has our solicitor looked at it? That's my question. And I'll just stay tuned here for a minute.
I believe Greg looked at an earlier draft.
Go ahead, solicitor.
I wasn't asked, I didn't draft the agreement, but I did look at it when it was on the agenda for the meeting tonight and I didn't notice anything concerning.
Nothing jumps out?
No, any issues. It's a well-drafted agreement and I think it, it meets the purpose for all the municipal units in there.
Thank you very much. And CAO?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would urge you to accept this agreement. I think regional economic development is important to our future, whether it's with seniors or families or what have you. Growing our economy cannot be done in isolation. We cannot compete with our neighbor municipalities. We need to work with them to, to leverage the assets we have, make the best of them. So, I would urge you to sign this. The people who've been around the table, the people who we've put around the table, we've got a great board of directors in place. It represents a great opportunity for us. If they're successful in finding a top-notch CEO, I think we're, we're putting ourselves in a very good position.
So, the next item coming up after this is the committee people? Is that what this is? No? Do you have the appointment? Has the people been already picked for this, for the committee? For the board?
The, the board is already picked, yes. It's the, it's the liaison committee and your worship has been representative on that. And so, I, I, I meant to check and see if that was a, an appointment that was actually formalized at, by council motion or if we just proceeded with that.
Can you, can you jump my memory how the board was picked?
We did a, an advertisement for, for nominations and I think councilors, ourselves or yourselves made nominations. There was a committee of the, of the, the interim board made up of CAOs and mayors and wardens who reviewed the resumes and...
And who picked them?
They did.
They did?
They did. I have that correct, don't I?
As in, who's they?
It was the CAOs and, and the mayors and wardens that were appointed to that committee. So, for each of the six participating municipalities, either the CAO or the elected official was on the committee and they were given the authority, I believe, your worship. That's...
Okay, great. Thank you.
In our case, it was...
Counselor Landau?
I'll make a motion that Mayor Moot be appointed as a representative on the REN Liaison Committee just to get it formalized.
Okay, we're going to go, we're going to do the rent agreement? Oh, okay. Okay, good. Yeah, we'll do the rent agreement first. So, this is the one that's in our hands. Read that. Questions been called. All those in favor, aye. Contrary, motion carried. And the REN Liaison Committee appointment. Yeah, so the motion's on the floor, but that, is that what you were after? Okay. All right. I'll accept the appointment. Okay.
Make a motion we appoint...
Can I make the motion? I seconded.
Make the motion for the mayor? Make a motion. I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we appoint Mayor Moot as our liaison to the rent.
Seconded, moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor, aye. Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Surplus equipment's gone. Build Canada Fund, Small Communities Fund, CAO.
Thank you, worship. As I'm sure you're aware, if you're reading your, your emails from FCM and UNSM, we're anticipating a, an intake in the, in the very near future for projects under the new Build Canada Fund. And there is some information out about what are eligible projects. And so, I asked, I sat with our town engineer and our director of finance and asked for him to put forward two projects for your consideration. What we need tonight is, is a motion to submit these two projects for funding under the new Build Canada Fund and then we'll proceed to, to do just that as soon as the application process opens.
Okay, moved, seconded. Counselor Landau, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, one thing I'm glad about, at least we're getting closer to the south end. We're not in it yet with these projects, but we're getting closer. And I may live long enough to see something happen down there. But my question to the CAO is this. We had quite a no cry from the residents on Argyle Street regarding the water issue. And I thought we had identified it as a priority for the Build Canada Fund for Argyle Street to look after the water issue down there. And I don't see it here. I'm just, what, what happened to that? Did the engineer dismiss counsel's recommendation? We're on the same page, your worship.
I just asked Counselor Mooney, where's, sorry, CAO, go ahead.
Okay, we, what we've approved in the budget is to do the smoke test, right?
Yes.
Let's do the smoke test, find out where the issues are, and then address the issues. At this point, we'd be putting the cart a little bit ahead of the horse by submitting a project when we don't actually know what we're doing. At this point, we're still trying to figure out what the solution is. These projects have been identified within your capital budget already for this year. So, if we don't receive funding, we will be looking to fund these out of our capital, out of revenue. However, we thought we might as well apply to the Build Canada Fund to offset as much as two-thirds of these costs for these projects, which would then allow us to use our own revenues in the future for projects such as Argyle Street when we know exactly what it is we need to do there.
And I, I agree with you, but I mean, this, in fairness, this discussion with Argyle Street was over a year ago. And what bothers me is this is nothing new, isn't it? It was a discussion we had. We had the residents here, much like we went through the same ritual tonight with Milton School. And I remember all gathering, looking very serious at this thing. And I'm just, I think my next question, so all we've basically done in a year is to determine we're going to run a test. Is that basically what I'm hearing here? That we're just running a test?
CAO?
I don't believe it's been a year, but I could be corrected on that. You know, so we had the residents here. We had our staff go out. Our staff did quite a bit of, of checking, you know, manholes, looking at flows during dry times to figure out, you know, is there clear water running in the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer when there's, when there's nothing coming out of the sky. They've determined as much as they could, but they feel that the study is necessary in order to, to, I guess, answer questions that they cannot answer. So, it, it, I don't know, I can't tell you that, that to spend a million dollars on infrastructure if we don't know exactly what the problem is we're trying to solve. We know what the end result is we're trying to solve. We just don't know the cause of it entirely. Where do we best spend the money?
So, if we, if we don't do this, we'd be chance losing, right?
We're in a rock and hard place.
We're in a rock and a hard place, so, so... Yeah, who's in the...
Oh, I was going to continue. I was just going to, I was just going to continue because again, and I agree with, with the CAO. I mean, this is money, this project's set in place. What concerns me is that this business with Argyle Street is a huge concern. It was brought up again tonight. We've got Leah Hazelton sitting there without sewer service and we've got all this, the only two things we heard at public hearing was sewage and, you know, the lack of drains. We all know, and I've been down there in too many people's basements. Counselor Mooney, when he was mayor and I, we're actually pumping in one basement one night together there for one fellow on Argyle Street. So, we know the issue. And what, what concerns me is that, and I think this is why, I realize we have to do this, but council identified a priority there. And it seems to me that priority has been set aside. I mean, we, to, to take a year to decide, we have to go to a, a study. I mean, my God, we're going to decide that tomorrow. How, so my next question is, okay, so we'll, we're going to go to a, a study, whatever. Is there a timeline here? Like, will it be another year before that's done? Because every day we waste, residents are, are being harmed down there. I mean, and this is the concern. I'm, I'm sitting here with my jaw dropping thinking, oh, my God, we've taken a year. And I believe it's been a little bit more than a year that we had this meeting out front here, that all that's been done is to say, oh, we need to hire a consultant and we're, we're going to do a, some test. Well, that could have been done six months ago or whatever, or maybe I'm missing something. That's, that's my only concern. I'm a, I'm a little disappointed that we identified a priority and I guess it wasn't taken seriously.
Sandy, Counselor Dennis, you're good.
I was just wondering about, my priority was Tuker and Green. Is that going to be worked on? I'm looking for it, but I can't find it.
I think Tuker and Green was in the capital budget for this year. This isn't your capital budget for this year. This is, this is your application to the Build Canada Fund that we're trying to make a recommendation on. So, your capital budget was about two million dollars, a little over two million dollars that we approved. And Counselor Landau has it there. I think he can tell you if Tuker and Green was in there. I think it was. The, so what we're trying to do is, is establish capital projects that we can submit to the Build Canada Fund. The, the Argyle Street situation, you know, I understand it's frustrating, but, you know, I, I hope you understand that we're not just going to throw money at what we think the solution is. We want to make sure that we do it smart. And the study itself is going to cost quite a bit of money. It's in the budget and we'll get it done. And, you know, that's, you know, we can talk to the town engineer next week at the committee of the whole if we have questions about timelines. I really can't answer that for you tonight. So, let's, let's have that discussion next week and maybe establish a, both a timeline and a, and a critical path that will get us to, to infrastructure investment.
There's, there's a difference between doing a study to say, should we do something? And doing the study to, this is what's wrong. That, it's a whole different ballgame. So, yeah. Okay, so Counselor, okay. Counselor Dawes, you on?
Okay, if I'm on, yes. Well, that's what I was just going to ask clarification of because as, as I recall, the, the reason for the smoke test was to find out exactly where the problems lie so that we know exactly where to dig up rather than just, 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 just make like groundhogs and dig everywhere. But you answered that question for me. Thank you. We have ten minutes.
Thank you, your worship. You know, we, we sat around, we, we did this planning and we did our priorities. And we also stressed when we put up the charts and everything, we spent two or three days on that. And we put up the proposals like what we want to see the best bang for the buck. The deputy mayor had, had the right idea. Jeff, you, you just said what the right idea was. We wanted to incorporate the best bang for the taxpayers and you've just said that. And I think we all pretty much agreed to that at that time and, and it was the right thing to do. And I believe it still is the right thing to do. There's a limited amount of time. The projects are there, up and ready. We know what we want. We know what we can do. The, the other ones, you know, there's lots of things that we, we'd like to have done. We'd like to have lots of money to do them all, but we can't. So, we have to start somewhere. These ones, these projects here are the best bang for the dollar, I would suggest. And that's why the CEO... that's why the CEO was bringing them forward. You have my full support on them. I don't have to wait to the committee of the whole or anything. I mean, I'm good, I'm good to go with this because it's the right thing to do. So if you need a motion for this, I'm prepared to make the motion that we move forward with the recommendations of the CIO to get this up and running, to get the funding for it. Thank you very much.
Go, counselor. Do I have someone, do I have a second? Counselor Mooney?
And just to echo what's been said, that test is quite expensive. I think it's over $50,000. And what came to light last year, Mr. Smith and some other people said there might be some piping that comes off the airport that was built in the 40s. So we're gonna, we're gonna study all of Argyle Street. We're gonna make sure what the problem is. We wanna be shovel, shovel ready like we were on Pleasant Street to get into this Build Canada Fund. And Argyle Street's still on the front of my, still on the front burner for me. And it's an important issue. I know they've had problems. Mrs. Kenny did state of some of the problems that she's had over the last several years. And with this study, it's not a study just to do a study. It's a study that's actually gonna tell us what the problem is out there on Argyle Street. So if we're gonna have to do this one first, I fully support Counselor Mackay. I think it's a great idea. Let's get something shovel ready. When you can get 75% money, you're doing really good.
Certainly, CIO?
Yeah, I just wanna say again that this is really for the purpose of the Build Canada Fund application. This is, this is not even close to all of the infrastructure investment we're gonna make, right? So, you know, we put more in infrastructure than any other municipality, you know, pound for pound in terms of proportion of investment we make on an annual basis relative to the depreciation of our, of our, of our infrastructure. We spend more than we, than we use up. So rest assured that if we, if we continue that track, we will have money to address the Argyle Street situation. When we know what the investments are to make, it will probably be in this kind of ballpark, but we will have the money to do the project because we, we have some good fiscal policies.
And I'm glad we have, I'm glad we have good fiscal policies because, I was gonna tell you guys this in an email. I was asked to speak in Toronto, what was it? I can't remember the name of the-
Strategy Institute and it's the eighth annual infrastructure symposium.
Yeah. We're doing stuff right and they wanna know. So it's a, so it's a good thing. It's a good thing. Okay, so motions on the floor, questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Yep. Good, okay. Build Canada Fund, FCM Board of Directors, CIO?
Your worship, I don't have any paper on this, so you may wanna think about this for a week. But, so what came up in a recent meeting of CAOs is we were talking about the fact that it's fairly expensive to be, to put your, put your name forward to be a member of the board of directors of FCM. And so we rarely have somebody from a municipality our size or from our end of the province putting their name forward, a counselor. So meeting with the CAOs in the REN area, the Digby and Yarmouth municipalities, we talked about the idea that the, the cost of that might be $15,000 to $20,000 a year because you have to pay all the travel costs of your, of your representative. And so we thought, why don't we talk about jointly putting together a commitment to fund a person, a nominee? And so then we could, we could talk to our councils and anybody who wants to put their name forward. You folks could decide who your candidate is. And then at the annual conference, you guys and AGM, you guys could support your nominee and potentially have somebody on the National Board of Directors for municipalities representing the kinds of interests that municipalities our size have. That was, that was what the CAOs talked about. And if you, if you want to support that even in principle or wait and talk about it next week, you know, to put it there.
Yes, sorry, Counselor, go ahead.
Your worship, we haven't got very much time, but I'll say this. I don't know if it's the best bang for our buck. I think, I think the FCM should be playing that role themselves with the people that are there. You know, for us to kick in $5,000 or $6,000 or $7,000, I don't know. I don't know if it's, if it's for us to do. I'm glad that you talked about it. At least you talked about it. But I don't think for me at this time that I could be in support of that right now till I get a heck of a lot more information and see if it's, if it's worthwhile for the citizens of the town of Yarmouth to sponsor that, that much money for what we're gonna get out of it. I know there's all kinds of UNSM, there's, you know, different aspects of the UNSM and other organizations that we belong to and that. So I think myself personally, I would like much rather to hold off on this one for a bit. That's just my, my opinion.
Thank you.
And your worship, I think at the last UNSM meeting, Dave Corkum talked about this. So maybe if we can get, get in contact with Mayor Corkum. I think they had something that wasn't quite elaborate as the $5,000 or $6,000 that you're talking about, but something that was way more affordable. I'm talking under $1,000 that they had a formula for. So maybe we can get ahold of Mayor Corkum, ask him what the discussion was. I was at the meeting, there was some discussion. So Mr. Corkum is the president of the Union of Nova Scotia Municipalities and they are looking for some people, municipal representation from outside the Halifax Regional Municipality, from smaller units that can't afford to send people to a national, national association. But if we get ahold of Mayor Corkum, I think it might be well worth our while.
Go ahead.
Your worship, we're just about at the witching hour. I, yeah. I'm not, yeah, I guess as far as pressing issues, Linda's been nudging me on the Hospital Foundation, the gala. They've, they've been wondering if the town of Yarmouth wanted to sponsor a table as they, as they did.
What's it cost? $1,200? Make a motion, we donate $1,200 to the Yarmouth Hospital Foundation.
Okay, we got, we got, hold it, hold it. I got three ayes and I got three lights on. Well, I had four lights on. Now we got-
I'll withdraw my motion.
I make a motion that we contribute $500 as donation to the Yarmouth Hospital Charitable Foundation.
I seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion. We got over here.
I think, your worship, if any counselor or the mayor wants to attend this event, they should pay their own way. I mean, I've done that in the past and Jim, I know you have. And I mean, this donate, I think the donation's a good idea. I really have personal problems using taxpayers' money to-
Sold out.
To, to, sold out anyway, so it's a mood issue. That's why you did that, eh, McLeod? I shouldn't have. It was smart. Good, even better. So we don't have to worry about the motion. We're just making a donation. So I agree with the motion. But I don't think we should be, taxpayers' money should be used to buy us a meal. I think Jim's idea of giving them a $500 donation. And we are in essence sharing half the cost of the Mariner Center as well. We're doing a nice donation there as well because, not this year, we're not. Ooh, even better. Thank you.
Counselor Mackay.
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, this comes every year. It's nothing new. And we, I've been having the same conversation for the last six, seven years. Would it be proper and appropriate to send the Hospital Foundation a letter and ask them to apply for the grants to organizations instead of going through this process all the time? I don't feel comfortable sitting around the table and voting for me to go have a dinner at $150 a plate.
Is that-
And, no, no. If they do that, a table of eight. That's what it says here. You know, that's all. Anyway, or the ticket costs $150. Yeah, so $1,200, if it just suggested $1,200, that's a table of eight. So I would say we ought not do that. And the money, where would the money come from? Would it come from the mayor's fund? Pardon?
Grants. That is the remainder of the grants.
Of the grants?
Yeah.
You found that funny? But anyway, I didn't think it was funny. I asked a sensible, maybe sensible questions make you giggle. I don't know. Anyway, so I'll, you said it's coming out of the grants to organizations.
Well, that's what he said, yeah.
That's what Jeff said. So, so your worship, would it be proper to make a motion on this or after this, this goes through, to make a motion that they, or just, you write them a letter and ask them if they would, wouldn't mind in the future just getting onto grants to organizations? Because it's unfair to them if they don't know about it. I don't know. And that way, they could send us a different letter, ask if they, we want to attend the dinner. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So is the, so the question on the motion for the $500, okay. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Do you wanna do that second motion? We can do it at the committee of the whole or something. We gotta get it.
Okay, last one. If we, if we assume the clock is wrong. I've got 11:01, so.
Move it up a bit.
Can we do, can we do the tender?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
We're all done for all I get.
All right. So tenders for a municipal tractor were advertised on the provincial procurement site as well as on the town of Yarmouth website. Three responses were received from dealers of municipal equipment with results summarized below. And all of the information is there. And after reviewing the tenders for compliance with specifications, it is recommended that the contract be awarded to the lowest tender, Saunders Equipment Limited, in the amount of $121,512 plus HST for a 2014 Trackless MT6, including the cold planer and ribbon snow blower. And this is for your information and approval. And I can tell you that we did have an inquiry from a local vendor who felt that he could, he could meet the specifications. However, once he, once he looked at them, he did, actually, he wrote back and he apologized because he didn't realize exactly what we were looking for. He couldn't meet the specifications and he appreciated the engineer's time in discussing it with him.
Okay. What did we move? Which one?
Second, lowest tender.
Lowest tender. Okay, Saunders Equipment. Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Not going anywhere telling me, read my mayor's report. Just a second. Can we do approval of invoices?
Go.
Date of next meeting?
You second.
Oh, somebody is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. We have the date of next meeting, May 15th. And that was because of UNSM. Okay, good. And that's it. Happy Easter, everybody. Enjoy your weekend. We'll figure the rest out when we come back next week. Okay?